I'll take a motion to open the meeting.
Sure.
Moved by Gordon, seconded by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you to EB Cam for recording and live streaming our meetings. Let's jump right in to Lilia.
Hi, everyone. Going to speak on behalf of majority of the student body at the high school. Everyone's pretty stressed to get their assignments in for the end of the week. Friday's the end of term, too, so everyone's trying to get their last assignments in and bring the grades up before that is over. The juniors had a meeting last Friday to discuss some upcoming things with Mr. Silva, some upcoming events and just for their second half of junior year. The seniors will be going tomorrow for their meeting and they're going to have some graduates from 2023 come back and talk about their first semester at college and their experience and the process of how that went for them. The upperclassmen or the executive groups are working really hard. We're planning a walk-in, which will be January 26th and the winter dance on February 10th. So that's for upperclassmen, but they're good events to kind of give the upperclassmen some separation as well. Today, the senior class voted on superlatives that will be going in the yearbook. And Mr. EBHS rehearsals will be up and running within the next couple of weeks. In the middle school at the high school, the seventh and eighth graders are also planning a dance, which is on January 19th. And one little update about sports is that the gymnastics team, which is a co-op with Brockton and Spelman, had a huge win over BR, which is really exciting, and they got the highest score in program history. And BR is the defending league champs. That was exciting for them, so I just want to congratulate them. That's all I have. Got a run through basketball games, but.
Thank you, Lilia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Welcome back. FY25 budget, we started our subcommittee meetings tonight with our subcommittee Rebecca Fidler, Gordon McKinnon, and our committee chair Lauren Foster, myself, Jay Fallon, and John Shea start talking about the budget, putting it together. Next week, we have our first meeting for the subcommittee and the town officials and their team to sit down and start talking about where we're at, where we're going, what our vision and mission is for the district. Our strategic plan, we set a time and a date on January 31st, which is a professional development day for the district, I think a half-day PD day. We'll be working with our principals on our strategic plan, getting that back and start talking about it. Anyone is welcome to come to that. I will send out the times on that. And we'll be putting it into, we bought the program ClearGov and it will go on top of, it will go onto our website so everybody can see our strategic plan, how we're doing with it, and it will keep up time throughout the year so we can see how much progress we've made throughout that time. The John Guilfoyle, we'll be working with them to help us relay our messaging to our district so that we keep, just like we, the town uses Guilfoyle, we'll be using them and they'll be helping us make sure that our communications continue to move forward. And so we are a transparent district. Our preschool conversation, and I hear about preschool concerns. I spoke to Mrs. Byrne today. She could not be at this meeting this evening, but we have talked about preschool concerns and we know that there are concerns. On February 5th will be the day that we'll put a close to the preschool and know that what we need to do and then we will have, we will go into a lottery if we need it. If we don't, if we have enough students or we don't, our students, we have just enough to fill all of our programs, we will not have to have a lottery. If we go over the number of students, instead of having the line outside the door at Central School and within 15 minutes those programs get filled up and then people get pushed out, we will have a lottery. I will be at the lottery. I will spin the wheel and pull the names or the numbers out of the hat, however we choose to do it, whether it's bingo balls or whatever the choice we do. Other districts do do a lottery. Some districts do it differently. I think a lottery is a good way to do it. We hope that we don't have to do that, but if we do, we have a very successful program. We have a very sought-out pre-K program. We're very proud of the pre-K program. We did have a tuition increase this year and it's still going to be filled up, but we'll do the best that we can to get all students in and we will do a fair, honest, ethical, manner lottery system if we have to. If we don't have to, then we won't. And I know that I had some members of the school committee call me, just mentioned that this had come up and I had a couple of parents had emailed me. I know a couple of parents have emailed Mrs. Byrne. Mrs. Nichols is here this evening. Mrs. Byrne and I spoke. She wants it to be fair. She's always been a fair, ethical manner and we'll do the best that we can to get everybody in. Mrs. Nichols here. Is there anything I missed on that?
No, at this point, I checked with Mrs. Harvey this afternoon. We've had 53 completed packets turned in and current, the current preschool has 110 students, so there are still many openings available.
So February 5th is our, February 5th is our date?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're rolling in slow?
Yeah, we're rolling them in, so we have 53 applicants this time. Before I get to the last two, I would just like to say that Dr. Williams is not obviously present this evening. We had a central school building committee meeting last week on 1-2, 2024. We had a tour and with the subcommittee and we went through the central school. We went from attic, or we went from the boiler room to the attic. We even saw a leak in progress while we were there. We got to feel the heat, how it pushes from the univents on the third floor and how the temperature, the temperature decreases about almost 15 degrees between floor to floor as you move throughout the building. We saw in many members of our subcommittee that didn't see the subcommittee before, or has not seen Central School in a while, didn't realize we didn't have an elevator. We do have a chairlift, but it doesn't go all the way to the second floor. So if a child in second grade breaks their leg from their hip down, we move that classroom down to the first floor and then a group would go up. We don't take a child, a peer from their peers that they started the year with if it's a mid-year crisis or a situation, but that's something that we really need to look at. We had to get a variance from there and Brian Kylie and myself, Brian Kylie worked on that variance and I can remember doing it because I was here at that time. Our doors stick. We still have problems with our doors. Our windows don't open. But we have a great program. We have great teachers, great administrative staff and staffing at Central School. I hopefully, the, when we find out about the feasibility study, we'll know more about the building and know what type of renovations we're going to do. But I was, Rebecca, you were there. You may want to speak to this and just what you saw. I mean, it's a great place. You saw, we saw great learning or we saw great things in the classrooms. It's.
Yeah, the history in the building is so cool, right? And especially for many people on the subcommittee, we went in that building, we were in that building, right? So there's a lot of history and heart in there and that's clear. It's just, it's old, right? And there's wires all over the place and everyone's making use of so much space that is just running out and some of that space is old. It was really fascinating to see all the work that goes in on the town side of how they maintain the building and the amount of every day someone being in there fixing something. It was pretty cool. I had some family members that were jealous I got to go in the attic. If the history was very, very, very cool, I can't stress that enough. I think anybody that's from the town feels that towards that building, but there really does, there's such a need for change in that building because work-wise every day, that's, it'd be a better environment.
I think the, watching people go into the boiler room, for me, was probably watching people's faces like they couldn't believe how big it was, they couldn't believe how clean it was, what it looked like. This is really what's making the building run. This is the muscle of the building. Couldn't believe how quiet it was, couldn't, you know, that we, that they brought all the materials through a small door from the outside when they built that four years ago, five years ago, Doug, when we did that. Just the, the maintenance on the machines, who comes in, who goes out, the pressure that's on those machines in those buildings and all the univents because the univents were not changed, so they had to do special things to that boiler system. So that was a neat thing and I think going past the bathrooms, people couldn't believe that some of those were the bathrooms.
My office is the former dentist's office. That's, that's the truth. It used to be the dentist's office. I have a spit sink in my office.
But it was nice to walk through. We'll have more tours throughout the year so that general public can come and see it, parents can come and see it. The building needs work, but it also is a great building and on both sides of it. So that's the last thing that I have, but I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Sue Sullivan on her retirement as a grade three teacher. She gave us 25 years of dedicated service. Mrs. Sullivan, I went and saw her last week, or the week before Christmas, which was her last week at the Mitchell School. I spoke to her. I thanked her for her service and her time. She's always smiled at me. We've always had nice conversation. I asked her, I said, please come back and see the school committee, say goodbye to us one last time. I can honestly tell you, she took a deep breath and got choked up for a moment and said, I think I'll just stay at home. I think there comes a time when they, when our teachers say goodbye to their students, say goodbye to their colleagues, say goodbye to their district, they need some time away. And it was heartfelt to get to speak with her and to talk with her. I wish her the best of luck. We sent her a gift from, from you, from the school committee and the district and we wish her the best and hopefully she'll come back and help us out in another year or so because we could always use extra hands. A great teacher. Last but not least, Mr. Doug Ortenzi, we want to thank him and congratulate him on his retirement after his 20 years of his dedicated service to the district of East Bridgewater. Not only was he the lead custodian at the high school, but he was also our district-wide head custodian, which we, he maintained a reach on both Central and Mitchell School. He supported us when custodians were out. He knew where to move people, knew where staffing needed to be. He understood how things needed to go in the summertime and how we needed to keep things moving to get them done by, by the close of June and then ESY up here and then Little Vikings on the Mitchell and the opening of all of the buildings come the third or the fourth week of August. The also great thing about him is he would answer my text messages at 4:58 in the morning on snow removal days to say, are we ready to go? Are we not ready to go? What does it look like and should I be calling school? So if anybody didn't like any of my calls last year, Doug Ortenzi is the one who would say to me, we need another hour, we need two hours, but I really like this class of 2023, so cancel school. So we're in constant contact. I also know from not only the town and but the Kiwanis perspective, Doug was a very, very instrumental person when it came to Christmas on the common and having all of the groups come down here at the high school. He was always here. The buildings looked, this building always looked great. He always had people here. He was here first, I think at four o'clock in the morning with, with the Kiwanis and the night before setting up and in the morning. It's hard to replace people like Doug. We wish him the best. I don't think we can replace you. We don't want to replace you, but we're certainly going to work to do the best we can without you and we look for you to return once in a while to say hello and have a great time, Cheryl, down in Cancun or Antigua or wherever else you're going to go. I'm surprised he doesn't have his Hawaiian shirt on today, but I see he's got his shorts. But thank you, Doug, for everything you've done for the district and we appreciate it. And Lauren, the next thing I have is Mrs. Nichols and Mrs. Anderson.
And Mr. Pickett.
Oh, Mr. Pickett's gonna, you're stepping in?
No.
Oh, man.
Deb, you can turn my screen.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to just update you on what is going on in the three buildings with regard to the first pillar of the strategic plan, our social emotional learning. In district-wide and all three buildings, we are looking at the CST process. I know Dr. Williams has spoken to you about that. We're going through some renovations, updating our process. The team at the Central School includes myself, Mrs. Fleming, Mrs. Sims, and Mrs. Emma. What we've done so far is looked at the district-wide D cap and the central school strategies checklist that we use for the teachers to fill out when they are getting child study paperwork for a student and we've merged them so that it has the look of what the D cap is and strategies from both the D cap and the checklist that we've used. So we're looking to streamline that process a little. We also looked at the form that the teacher fills out and just moved things around a little bit. The first item that the teachers filled out in the form that we currently use was what strategy, what strategies are being used in the classroom, what interventions are students getting? And we've moved up to the first spot, what are the students' strengths and what are the students' interests? Kind of going along with exactly what our plan is. We need to build relationships with students, find out what their interests and their strengths are so that we can support them in the areas that they're struggling. So that's just a little tweak, but we'll continue to work on that throughout the rest of the school year and I know Dr. Williams would like to present that document to you in the spring. So we'll continue that. The safety care trainings that staff have needed are complete. All of our initial trainings for safety care are finished as well as all the recertifications. The only people that are left to be recertified are the trainers, myself, Mrs. Dupre, Travis Pickless. We have three new trainers in the district. Mr. Walsh from the high school, Mrs. Crawford from the Central School and Mrs. Rinkard also from the high school have all been trained as trainers. So they were super helpful in getting up, helping us finish up the trainings that we needed to complete within the timeframe so that no one's certification lapsed. At our building, you know, we live, breathe, social, emotional, all day, every day. Some of the new things that are happening right now is students that work with adjustment counselors. Some of the groups have been changed up to start the new year. Students that have the highest needs are of course kept in those groups. Sometimes the models move in and out so the peer group can change for students to work with new peers. Mr. Raphold, who works with our Done With Bullying program, he came to visit prior to break. He came and visited the students during their lunch period. So we walked around and chatted with them and sat down and ate lunch with them, so it was great to have him come in. And now we move into the phase of the new year where he actually goes into individual classrooms. And we say, this classroom is really working on this particular skill and he'll go in and address those needs. So he goes on a more individualized classroom basis. We have our fun run kickoff on January 24th, which is our PTO fundraiser that the students and the teachers always look forward to. This year, the theme is being an agent for change and how students have the power to make change, how they need to make a plan for the change that they want to make and then stick to it when it gets tough. So every day during the fun run week, the students are watching character building videos that are put out by Booster. So that's a great way for the students to have their mind, body, and their soul worked on. So that's kind of where we're at, at Central School. Thank you. Mr. Pickett, we're going.
Sure, I'll jump right in there.
Go in order.
I think a tremendous amount is being done in, at each of the schools across the district in areas such as, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, our efforts in UDL, Universal Design for Learning, the CST process, safety care training, along with the CST process, where does our district curriculum accommodation plan fit in with that? And at least at Mitchell and in the other individual schools, our own sort of school ideologies being, you know, respect oneself, respect others, respect the school, the power of positive relationships, those things. And we began over the summer over at Mitchell to kind of think, is there something that, is there a culture that we can, is there a way that we can define the culture that we're trying to create that can encapsulate sort of the, the essences of all of those things? And we together kind of came up with this, this concept, but also this, this, this way of living too, referring to as dignity. And dignity for us seems like it really captures the elements of all of those movements for social, emotional well-being. And so in short, that's what we're trying to do over at Mitchell is to create a culture of dignity. And to put that into practice, we set up through logistics and organizationally, a guidance counselor and adjustment counselor for grades three and four and a guidance counselor and adjustment counselor for grades five and six. And every week they would be going into a homeroom and teaching particular lessons on dignity. And part one, really the lessons were, you know, in three parts, larger parts for dignity, what is it? What are the elements of dignity? And, and, and how do you practice dignity? What does it look like to live with dignity? And that concluded our part one, which we, we wrapping up this week in fact. And our part two is hopefully to bring this more infused, more directly into the classrooms themselves and have teachers contribute more and sort of synthesize that with the curriculum that's, that's functioning in each of the classrooms as well. And discussing concepts such as vulnerability, shame, anger, anxiety, self-compassion, boundaries, self-regulation and self-aggressing and how that is sort of also under the umbrella of what it means to live with dignity. And I can say wholeheartedly that it's been an absolute success to date and I'm looking forward to part two. And it just really, it really says a lot about all of our collective efforts in all of these areas and what it could look like sort of manifest itself under that umbrella and that concept, but all the individual practices that are happening each and every day at each one of our, our schools. So we're proud of it and thank you.
At the high school, we've seen an uptake with mental health crisis. A year ago to this date, we had 12. As of this year, we're at 18 that have been screened for mental health crisis, whether they've gone out to an ambulance, crisis has been called here. Because of those numbers, I meet with the adjustment counselor, Mrs. Carlisle, and the school psychologist, Mrs. Frank. So we kind of meet each week to kind of go over high-risk students that we know that are in. Then we meet with the SST group, which is a group of people within the school that are support for them. Because we've seen those numbers, we're being much more proactive with being out in the hallways, being more out in the cafeteria, being more aware of situations where kids would be struggling. So for that, we had expert training, which is a screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment. So it's substance abuse at the state. We did the 10th graders. We pulled them out of English class, so we had health coaches come from all over the state. They screened our 10th graders. It's about five minutes. If they went past the five minutes and answered questions, then they would have a little bit more counseling, then we were given those names, so we were able to meet with them. Because we were given a grant, Dr. Williams and I did, we were able to secure a wellness youth coach for the next five years that will come into our school through Mass General and they will be here on Tuesdays and Wednesdays starting in February. So they are here for mental health, for addiction, for I decide, anything that we feel would help benefit our students in that. And that is through Mass General. So that was a big deal for us. We've never been able to get that and so we will have this person for the next five years. Active Minds, which is our chapter for this, did the 12 days of mental health where students submitted slides for the 12 days. The students did their own slides, they did them with their peers, and then we sent them out district-wide for everybody to do. And they are starting a fundraiser so that will start coming out for a suicide prevention walk in March. It will be throughout the whole school. It's a pretty big deal. And then our, just our partnership with EB Hope, which we take very seriously. On January 18th, we are having Why Character Matters by Mark Lean Weaver, who was a major league baseball agent. We got through the MIAA and Why Character Matters. So they will be here for ninth, for seventh, eighth and ninth at 9:00 AM and at 10:00 AM, 10:11 and 12. So you're more than welcome to come. He's great. He's excellent and talks about social media and then being the best advocate for themselves. And then we are invited to be in the No Youth Conference for EB Hope and that is March 7th at Bridgewater State. So that's kind of what's going on with us in the next few months.
What was the date that the outside speaker is coming in?
He is coming in on January 18th. There's one at 9:00 and then one at 10:00.
How many adjustment counselors do we have at each school?
At the Central School, we have three and plus our school psychologist.
Two guidance counselors and two adjustment counselors.
We have one adjustment counselor and four guidance counselors and a school psychologist.
How many mental health crises have we had at the Central School?
This year, we have not needed to call crisis and I don't believe Mr. Mahoney has done any interviews to my knowledge at this point.
How many mental health crises have we had at Mitchell?
Two.
And we've had 18. Thank you.
I love how that question, even Mr. Pickett was like, two. On fire. I think it's telling. I think I see where you're going with the question, right? The amount of support that is available obviously shifts and changes the de-escalation of crisis. That's for sure.
Does anybody have any additional questions?
No, thank you. That's exciting.
That's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we, you guys can go. That's fine. Thank you very much. Before we move on, I just wanted to, we moved kind of quickly through our first, you know, part of the meeting and I wanted to make sure if anybody had any questions for anything we'd already discussed tonight, you could ask them now if you have any questions about anything else we've talked about tonight. Because we kind of didn't pause anywhere, we just kind of went bing, 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 bing. So if you have any questions about anything else we talked about, we could ask them now before we move on to John's next. So we could, that would be a good time because I didn't pause. That's all. Thank you. That's all.
Wait for you. He would say that to me.
Thank you, Mr. Ortenzi.
That's why I'm saying it to him.
That's why I'm saying it to him.
Signing on a grab.
Uh huh.
Are we getting on a grab or signing on a grab?
Yeah.
All right, I'll be brief today. We had a lot of information in the budget meeting, but for next year's budget, this year, non-salary, salary right now, we're look, we have a $200,000 variance, available balance. You can see last year at this time, we had a $612,000 available balance, so it's a little concerning on the non-salary portion of our budget. It's mainly due to transportation and special education tuition, unforeseen and unbudgeted expenses. Not too concerned at this point in time, because there is, could be money available for that in the state's 2023 supplemental budget, and the circuit breaker, this year's circuit breaker. So there's a pretty important meeting that the state's putting on tomorrow that will be getting more, J and M will be getting more information on that. So I believe there's additional revenue that should be coming in to cover some of those unforeseen expenses. On the salary budget, you can see we have an available balance right now of $12,013,000. Last year, it's pretty comparable to where we were last year at $11,674,000. On the next page is the summary that I've been putting together this year. It shows by line item and by category where we are, how much we spent per line item, an estimate of the remainder of the year, and it gives you a total estimated salary for fiscal year '24, and it shows you the budget, and it gives you a variance. So if you look at the bottom, right now, we're looking at a positive, positive variance of $41,000, which is great. I know, I think I made a copy of two pages that look like the same thing. Don't pay a second, don't pay attention to the second page. I mean, it's only off $900, it's off $900, so it mixed it. Any questions on those?
You'll be at our next meeting, right? Just in case anybody has any questions after the fact.
Probably, yeah.
Usually are.
In my office too, so.
You know, that's true.
Revolving accounts, really, I mean, they're pretty consistent from, pretty consistent all year, school lunch. We have an available balance of $530,000. There's a lot of work going on in school lunch. We're looking at redoing the Mitchell School cafeteria, and also looking at a new van to transport the food. Circuit breaker, consistent. School choice at $750,000. Athletic fund, consistent to where we were last year. Preschool is positive, which is great. School building rental is probably the lowest it's been over the, over the years that I've been here. We've had a lot of unexpected equipment failures that we've used that, that unfollowed. It's more of an emergency basis, and that's what we've used it for, to cover emergencies. Should we have those emergencies? And brought up at the budget meeting, a five-year plan that we're putting together to prevent emergencies like that happening. We want to be more prepared for, for equipment failures and things like that. I think going forward, we will be. We'll be budgeting those in our operational budget, rather than using a school building rental fund to fund those emergencies. So I do have a plan in place to kind of correct deficiency, which I feel is there.
Thank you.
John, are there rules around how school rental money can be used?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. There's rules around every one of these funds.
Gotcha.
And I have a really good summary that the state, the state publishes, which I could send to you.
Thank you.
Be helpful. Thank you.
Any questions, Ron?
John, one of the bigger line items on the revolving fund balance is the school choice side of things. Could you just walk us through that a little bit and how that kind of comes about and...
So school choice, we get reimbursed from other schools for students that come here from other towns. The reimbursement is $5,000 per year, unless the student has an IEP, which there would be additional funding. So on average, we get about $250,000 a year in school choice from our school choice children. This year, we have been using that, the school choice, $250,000 to fund an RTI coordinator, and we've been using it to fund tech in the IT department. And during COVID, we use it to fund the custodial, additional custodial. So it's $250,000 a year. If you don't spend it, it'll carry over. Any idea what our per pupil spending is? Off the top of my head, no.
Went up to around like $11,000.
Yeah, I don't want to give a number, because I don't know off the top of my head, but I could certainly provide that information for you. We're still, you know, six years ago, we were second, yeah, third or second from the bottom of the state. We have improved. We're still in the, in the low, probably the lower 25th percentile of the state.
What do you, do you know?
I haven't looked at it recently, but I have an idea. I don't know if it's as low as what we thought it was, and I'm just trying to...
We've moved up. We're not at $9,000 anymore. We were, I think, around $12,000.
I'm just trying to figure out how that squares with $5,000 that we get.
That it has...
$5,000, it doesn't cover.
They have, it has nothing to do with school choice. That's the, that is what the government has chosen, has chosen to give. Every school gets the same amount of money. So it's not, has nothing to do. We wish that it did. Just like Chapter 70, like the SOA, no one ever thought that that was going to be part of, that that was going to be important, and we have a webinar next week that the Student Opportunity Act is now going to take place, and now you, we should start to see that funding allocated in a different way going forward over the next four or five years, that not all the funding is just going to go to inner-city and urbans. You're going to see it fan out a little bit more. And so we have to redo our SOA plan that we have done, because ESAR sort of took that place in the last couple of years, getting the ESAR grant after COVID. That runs out at the end of this year, and then, so we'll be doing our new SOA plan. Hopefully.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Is anyone here for public comment? So before you decide...
I think she's going to talk to us afterwards, so it's...
Okay, okay.
That's fine.
So, no.
I guess not, no.
Okay, okay, cool.
We don't want to, we don't, no, it's fine.
Thank you for coming, either way. And we have moved on to action items. First action item is related to home education plans for the remainder of the 2023, 2024 school year, which have been reviewed and approved by Dr. Jeanne Williams and recommended for approval by Superintendent McCall. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Scott. Second. Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take a motion after review on payroll warrant 25 PS dated 12/2023 and 27 PS dated 1/3/24. Moved. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Becky. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, you guys.
I can vote.
So Peter has abstained, and Scott is allowed to vote. I'll take a motion after review on accounts payable warrants 24 SV dated 12/13/23, 26 SV dated 12/27/23, and 28 SV dated 1/3/2024. So moved. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, Gordon has a question.
Sorry. On the, I don't know who I'm addressing this to, certainly no one that left. The invoice warrant, 26 SV, if you look at the page numbers, I don't know if it's just a clerical thing, but they go, you know, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10. I don't know if there are pages in between, or it's just, it's just a counting thing. No? No?
No, no, there are no odd numbers, no odd pages.
No? I'm assuming a bunch of pages missing, but although I didn't add the math up, it's only, it's only a $98,000 total, so it didn't seem huge.
So, I have 11, 12, 13, 14. Oh, they probably got collated.
So you have, all right.
What are you missing?
Lauren, all the odd numbers.
You don't have even. Oh, I have a full packet. Are you looking at...
You have 1, 3, 5, 7, 9.
20, wait, let's make sure I'm looking at, no, I'm not looking, guys, I'm not looking at the right one. Here's 26, and it does feel thin.
Okay.
Yep, this is the one. We only have even numbers, so do we want to table that?
What happens if we table that? Does that become a problem?
We just have to bring it back to Joanne.
Okay.
We have to bring it back to Joanne Benner.
So if we table not voting on this, is that going to be... I would table not voting on it, if it's not a complete package. Okay.
We don't know.
Just bring it back to Joanne.
Right, because it's not complete.
I think that happened the last time, didn't it, when she printed it off?
So table 26, 6. So we're going to table, can we table?
Just 26.
Just 26?
Yeah, the other one seemed fine, I mean.
So I'm going to read the motion again, eliminate 26, and then we can move on.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve accounts payable warrants 24 SV dated 12/13/2023 and 28 SV dated 1/3/2024.
Moved.
Moved by Ellen. Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will bring back 26 at our next meeting. Okay. I'll take a motion to, a few minutes, from the school committee meeting of December 12, 2023.
Moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by...
Question.
Go ahead.
All right, jumping in there. Do we know where we stand with the, we're getting the superintendent evaluation software, whatever, do we know where we are with that?
Yep. So we spoke to, what's her name, Gretchen? Gretchen Restino. She's going to do Mike next week, and then we'll get a subcommittee for, talk, well, actually, we're going to ask Ellen, because she's the lead on that, and then she can put it out and say what, how, what we need and what they don't. Because she'll give us a tutorial, and then she'll ask Ellen what they think that they need.
Great.
So she not to take a whole bunch of time out.
Thank you.
She said that she would do individuals as well. Like, you know.
Thank you. No more questions.
Questions are good, Gordon, it's fine. So we have a motion by Ellen, second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now I will take a motion to enter into executive session. Are you going to just wait to say one thing? Maybe if, if it's at a time that people can attend, maybe like the supervall subcommittee could go. Maybe.
Then we'd have to post it. We were hoping that Mike and I and you could sit, like during the day, and then she'll tell you, because you could tell her, we don't need this, we need that, we need this. And that's what we were hoping to like sort of make it a little bit more streamlined for the committee, because I think it's hard for the subcommittees to get together.
Bring things back, bring it back to people. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's how we were, we were thinking.
Were you nervous that you would be saying like a final decision or something? Yeah, I don't worry.
We, we've got the program, so anybody can call Gretchen, and she said that she would do it for anybody for the entire length. But I said it's very difficult, because people do have work schedules, and we thought that if we just did it like this, and then Ellen could say, this was very helpful, this, we don't really need this, yes, this would be great. So we were hoping to streamline.
Do my best, and bring it back to, I could, I could do my best.
We'll be with you. I mean, I'll be with you, so.
Anything else? Let's go.
Are there things we need to sign?
Oh, there's, right here, there's a stack.
Okay, I'll do that.
Now I'll take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 1, to discuss complaints or charges brought against the superintendent of schools.
Moved.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Ellen. We need to do a roll call vote, I believe. Pennington, aye.
Fier, aye.
Goodler, aye.
McKinnon, aye.
Walker, aye.
Foster, aye. And now we will move into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 1, to discuss complaints or charges brought against the superintendent of schools. Thank you, everyone.